What's all that? Oh, okay.
There you go, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to the minutes.
No, no, go ahead.
All right, moving on, we're gonna go to the approval of the minutes for our meeting on October 5th of 2020. Does anybody have any changes or details?
I didn't have any.
I don't.
Uh, anybody want to?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as written for the October 5th, 2020.
Second.
Uh, seeing that that's all in favor? Minutes approved, four nothing. We will go on the... From reports from the assigned boards, uh, I'll start off just quickly since I'm on budget. We haven't had a meeting since the previously, which we've already spoke about, so there's nothing new on budget. CIP, have we had a meeting at all yet? No?
No, we pretty much like stuck until we get somebody from the school.
Uh, we have a rep from the school, we just don't have any content from the school.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have...
It's always slow getting it from them.
Submission, so, um, you're kind of getting the stuff, you know, and talking with the department heads that you are, that's me trying to at least get you all up to speed on that content. The committee, such as it is, is only a few people, so, uh, we can go through those motions when we get all the content, but until we have... It's up to you, you know, it's your show, but there's nothing to do until you got all the requests.
Pieces, right, okay. Uh, Marston's?
Uh, I don't have an update on that.
Uh, 300? 300, they had a meeting, uh, you know, a lot of discussion on, again, still ways to raise funds. You know, looking, discussing things they'd like to see, like a reenactment.
When was the last meeting at the 300?
It was after our meeting, that what, that Thursday, I think it was, a couple of weeks ago.
How's the cookbook sales going?
Good, that's, it's out and about and, um, yeah, they're doing a lot of work, they have a lot of ideas.
At what point do they have to get past the ideas to what's the real action plan? I mean, time, timeline?
Well, they have that Zoom meeting coming up where they're having, you know, anybody that wants to to join in, and then they're gonna have a lot of ass, then if, you know, anybody looking to do, you know...
They did have, actually, I think, too, like a list of like what they're planning for over the summer. You know, at this time of year, we're gonna do this, this, we're gonna do this, and...
Yeah, but we haven't seen how all of that's gonna be funded and what's real and what's not real.
Well, I think, I mean, that's, their ultimate goal is they're trying to raise the funds, you know, from the money that we've given them and, you know, and then again, they're gonna, we're gonna start working on that ad book here pretty soon.
On the what?
Ad book, it's gonna be like a little...
Right, right, right.
Booklet with... They're working on it, I mean, they got some things, they're gonna, you know, they wanna have a parade and, uh, all kinds of stuff, bonfire.
What role, remind me, what role do we play in ultimately what's done? Is it just like the 300th committee decides they wanna do stuff, they have the money, then they go forward with it? Or does the board have any kind of?
You are the agents of the fund, so you decide what gets spent upon.
Okay.
I think you charged the committee when it was formed with some tasks, and we have to dig up and reread.
Which is basically the, the recommendations.
Make a plan and come back to us, I think.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't have to go find it, but, um, I, I think you've been waiting for a, uh, a plan of action so that you can say, yeah, go spend X number of dollars on that plan, and then we, then you can get out of the way and they can go do their work, I think was your...
It, it was the plan and the estimates.
Do they have a rough estimate of how much money they're looking to obtain in order to fund this?
Well, I haven't heard a figure, no, but, you know, like some of the cost, I think they know around about cost of what it would be for that reenactment with the camp and all that stuff, I think it was around $10,000 or something like that. So, and I don't know what a parade would be, with trying to reach out, like, uh, there's a government number we can call up and request, you know, what was available with an army, Navy, Marine, whatever, like marching band.
They want to buy all the flags, too, they want to purchase, yeah, that's why I just didn't know if those, if somebody had to, like, a roundabout idea.
They got, they got quotes on, you know, flags and stuff like that, I couldn't tell you exactly, but they do have all that, I mean, to put up there by the square and, you know, hang them from the poles and stuff, so...
Right. Yeah, I was just more curious, like, if they said, hey, to put on a big celebration, we need to raise $50,000, and we're at, here we are, knowing that we're one year away, we're getting close to that one year. If they're not at 50% of that, what do we have to do to get to that extra?
Yeah.
You know, is the town gonna have to pay anything in, are we gonna be at that point, you know, or are they saying it's 30,000, we're already at 25, then you're like, great, you guys are doing awesome. There's more of just trying to see, like, you know, where on the scale?
Yeah.
As the year, we come to that one year moment, you know?
I know, and they're doing good on the, the T-shirts, for sure.
Yeah.
I believe they're gonna do good on the cookbooks as well, you know, I don't know how many they have, but, the, uh, I give them all a effort, they're, they're trying the hardest to...
Right.
To sell as much stuff as they can, and they got, gonna come out with another Christmas ornament.
And the quilts?
Yeah, they're still talking about the quilts, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're already offering. Yeah, so I was just...
But they're not doing a lot of them, they're doing, you know, as they sell them, or whatever, they'll have some more made up, so...
Do you have the cookbooks in the office for sale?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They totally won one somehow.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Oh.
They had a Zoom presentation last week to sort of announce and showcase the cookbooks, so...
Actually, I got one, it's actually great, a lot of nice stuff in there.
Yeah.
Hey, off, off topic of 300th, but, um, what's Courtney thinking for the Christmas parade this year?
Uh, we're still kind of kicking that around, waiting to see what the world looks like, um, who's interested in being in a parade, maybe the limiting factor, which is who's interested in standing on the side of the road watching a parade.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're kind of up in the air.
I was actually thinking about that, how, you know, the fire department takes the truck and they visit all the neighborhoods, maybe we could expand on that, let people stay at home and do something a little, you know, I don't know, throw candy and T-shirts at people from the back of the fire truck or something, but build on that because that maintains distance and it gives everybody a chance to have a taste of the fun.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Right back to you, Todd?
Planning board.
How was that planning board meeting?
So, planning board, uh, the meeting started, was if there was a, a public meeting, and we had the, um, zoning board was there as well, and they spoke about different issues and upcoming, uh, agenda to get ready for some changes. And then in the hearing, we had three, uh, different hearings, and one, the first one was the people from the, uh, Water Cross came for the first time.
Oh, yeah.
And then we had a case, uh, the other two were both accepted. One was for, uh, someone trying to turn the, uh, property back into a boarding place for horses, which I guess it was prior to, and, um, that, their plan review, whatever, was accepted, but we're going for a sidewalk Wednesday night over there to the property. And then we had another application, uh, of, from Northwood Veterinary Hospital, looking to make a temporary change of, uh, change of use for, for four months. And this property is located at 255 Old Turnpike Road, tax map 16 lot 7, so...
What's the process that was laid out for the Water Cross event?
There really wasn't any yet, I mean, just, you know, they, that was their initial, I think, just kind of...
Conceptual.
Yeah, a little bit back. And told, you know, told her what, what she'd need to do, you know, going forward, and so, there'd be more to come, I'm sure. But there was also people from the public who were...
Yeah.
Chris?
Cause they're still doing Zoom meetings, but they were...
Oh, okay, right, 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 yeah.
We'll see.
All right. Thank you very much. That is the boards and committees for the town. Uh, next, when Chris is ready, we will go to the administrative report.
All right, uh, let's see, uh, there's an election coming, I've never heard, um, the absentee count is somewhere around 1,000 ballots right now, they've been bananas, straight out, uh, I, there's still time for more of it, too, so...
I mean, if anybody out there is interested in helping at the polls, it's always welcome.
Yeah, call, call the town clerk's office, call the town office, we'll put you in touch with, somebody to put you to work for...
What's, what's the number of registered voters, Chris, do you remember?
Uh, it's in the fourth ballot, yeah.
We usually, from what Bonnie said, again, not to take it, we'll go back to you quickly, but there's, uh, for presidents like this, there's usually over 80% of the turnout.
Yeah, the last one was incredible.
So, it's gonna be a big...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if with that many mail-in ballots, it's still gonna be a...
It's still gonna be a crowd.
It's gonna be a big day.
Yeah. The, uh, other election officials are doing a walkthrough with the school this week, uh, the outdoor, the plan at this point, I haven't, I haven't seen the space, but, uh, they seem pretty confident in it. Instead of the outdoor tent setup that you sat by for the, um, unmasked voters on the side, they're gonna, they're gonna work through a window, uh...
So, are people gonna walk up to that window?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, voters are gonna walk up to the window so the election workers can be inside, we don't know what the weather's gonna be. Uh, we'll cover that area probably with one of those tent things, but, um, you know, if it's really cold, a long day to sit out there for the election workers, so... Uh, they'll be inside and dry and at least partially warm.
Yeah.
Voters will still be outside, but that's...
So, will they actually have somebody there, like they do when you come through the building? You have the two people there checking the ID and then writing the name down? They're gonna have two more people at that window?
The same operation that was going on by the labor, under those tents, for the, uh, it's, it's actually an absentee process. Formally, it's an absentee process to, to, you know, not go in the building.
Yeah.
Uh, that process is gonna be identical, it's just gonna be in a different location, so, um, it didn't get a lot of traffic at the primary.
No, it didn't.
Right, and so, um, this is obviously a different animal, who knows? But, that was, that's the plan at this point. The setup of the, the gym and everything has to wait till school is over on Monday, the day before, uh, cause the school's in session, so, um, it's gonna be a bit of a race that afternoon. You're supposed to meet that night, so you may or may not see me, and be 20 hours out, so we'll see how it goes over there. Uh, we're trying to keep that meeting as clean as possible, uh, cause you're gonna have a long, you guys are all working on it the next day, so you don't wanna be here all night.
Would, would it make more sense for us to not meet, but to be up there helping to set up if we can?
It may be, it may make more sense to just meet there, if we need to conduct some quick business, and if you're able to help out with the setup.
Yeah.
You know, so if you're open to that?
Yeah.
We can make that decision late.
Have the meeting in the library?
Yeah, uh, have it anywhere, yeah, uh, we, we, we don't have anything, uh, at this point, we don't have anything on your agenda that's really, uh, you know, comprehensive or controversial or expensive or anything, so, if you don't get on TV, it's not the end of the world.
And potentially, depending on what work schedules are like, we might be able to do it earlier.
Yeah, depending on your various availability.
Yeah, if we did it earlier, then we could help earlier.
Yeah, that, and you could, you know, get out of town business before spending...
Yeah.
16 hours here instead of going off. So, if you're comfortable waiting on that decision until the week before, uh, you'll, you know, I, I am.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, and you'll probably, in between now, and then you'll probably hear from the moderator about meals for election workers, you know, we can budget anything for that, and then, you know, she's, she's coming up with a number, so get a number to the board and...
Which, if you guys didn't respond to that email, you should...
I did.
Yeah.
Oh, you got, right, you got a, a...
Asking, yeah.
Survey kind of thing about, right, so, the backside of that, you'll be hearing something about that. Other than that, uh, I'm not aware of anything being a problem.
Did you talk to Courtney at all about her holiday plans, her Halloween plans that she, that was going on?
There's, uh, the event here, uh, spooky walk, uh, 2.0 or whatever it is, um, that, we've also posted some guidance for trick-or-treating. Uh, you know, do it if you want, don't do it if you don't wanna do it, but if you're gonna do it, this is how we suggest you do it. So, there's the all-outdoor event here, uh, Halloween's a Saturday, it's that day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, uh, trick-or-treating, we're kind of hands-off, but this is...
Right, I was, I didn't know for a spooky walk, cause they were talking about the poison ivy, if that actually got...
Right, right.
They'll figure that out, that'll...
I'd say, yeah, just, it's 11 days away, so I didn't know if it was, uh, if they got any progress on it, so I was basically just...
I don't, I don't know if they made progress on the poison ivy, um, they may be rerouting to a...
Okay.
One, one good thing is we can certainly count on Courtney.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
So, I think that's it for election, um, you know, obviously things have a way of cropping up, but... Route 4 property, uh, I walked it with the appraiser last week, he probably will have something to do with the end of this week. And the RFP for Brokerage Services went out last week, it's due a week from today, so we'll have those results for you prior to your next meeting. Uh, see, we don't know if it's gonna generate any interest or not, but you'll, you'll know by then. CARES Act, we actually got the money, we got the cash, uh, a big $120,000 reimbursement for COVID-related expenses. We, we actually received it, it's in the bank. We also scooped up another $5,000 election grant from a private organization that's been throwing money around. And we have another grant, uh, pending for election-related, uh, stuff, also from the state of New Hampshire. It's pretty well done for another 12, 15,000. We've talked about renovating the community center kitchen, uh, here, we got the asbestos tests back, as expected, tiles, floor tiles have asbestos, and the glue that holds them to the floor have asbestos. Same tiles throughout the whole building, so I think it's pretty safe to assume that that's the situation we have here, that is what we expected. Uh, the good news is that the Cove molding adhesive does not have asbestos, so, uh, we don't have to, um, remediate if we don't want to. We can cover it up if we want to, if we don't disturb the floor too much, it's okay. With asbestos, you can leave it alone and it's okay, um, as long as it's not falling apart and, you know, creating dust and everything. So, uh, when we come around to talking about that renovation, we can talk about just covering it. If you wanna put the problem off for another generation, or we can remediate, we'll have that choice at that time. But the, the good news is that, uh, it's, it's just the floor and it's, you know, it's kind of what we expected.
Do we know we wanna talk about that?
Uh, we, we, it's part of the budget process, if you, if you wanna make that a priority, we're gonna have to get a number for you, you know, to make a budgetary decision on it, um, and we'll probably do two, we'll do one with remediation and one without. And it'll probably be a pretty big difference, but...
Anybody have thoughts on that, or?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's a conversation that we should have, but I would... Question is, do we have that conversation about just the kitchen, or do we, not suggesting that we redo the whole building, but that we think about the whole building and maybe, I mean, is that something that goes in CIP over time? That we're gonna look at parts of the building, you know, like, do we do it one room at a time, or? I, I don't know enough about it to know what makes sense, but I think we should at least have the con, the conversation.
I was just curious, like, do we wanna put that on the agenda for, not this next meeting, but the meeting after that? I don't know if that's gonna be too late, cause the next meeting, we don't have much discussed, but it's the night before election, so it's it's a quick day, or a long day the next day, or whatever night, so...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what we can get you in terms of substance until...
I just don't wanna see it go away, I just wanna make sure, I know we're talking about it, I wanted to make sure we put an action on it, cause it's something we did talk about two years ago, or a long, you know, about that, doing something over there, so, and it's a well-used space that does need a...
Uh, yeah, I...
A, a good upgrade, so...
You'll give us, I mean, we'll have an idea, too, of what the cost would be to, if we wanted to say, let's, you know, talk about the rest of the building on just the square footage on there, on what the...
It would, it would indicate...
Give us a little bit of an idea of what it's gonna cost.
I don't know, I, I think that, I think that kitchen's an embarrassment.
I mean, the room for the amount of use that it gets in it, I mean, go look at all the rooms in this building, they're all need something. There's not, it's not, we keep painting it, and that's pretty much, but it's not...
But that's a room that's used a lot.
By the general public, absolutely, you know, in, you know, clubs or whatever, so...
Exactly, yeah.
We'll look forward to have that conversation in the near future.
Uh, last thing I have, we're still waiting on, uh, the, the school district has submitted stuff to DRA so we can set a tax rate, so, I don't have any updated information on that, uh, we are getting a little bit late, um, we're not in cash flow crunch position yet, uh, but...
When do the bills normally go out?
Uh, you, we've typically been around, uh, end of, uh, October, early November for due date, late November, early December.
Right, yeah.
It would be, it would be surprising if we could get to that schedule from where we are right now, given the steps that have to take place in between the last piece of information getting to DRA and the bills landing in mailboxes, uh, that's about a two-week process. So, um, I'll keep you posted.
Is there something unusual that's holding them up?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, there's been a lot of, I mean, there's, there's a lot of personnel changes at the SAU, they're, they have a new superintendent and an interim finance person.
Okay.
I suspect that's contributing, but I don't know what else they have going on.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
All right, then we will quickly go on to, um, the assessing portion. So, we have an intent to cut, uh, then we have something that we haven't seen, I don't think, yet, uh, the yield tax levy. Can you guys see that?
This here. Oh, so that's just the amount we will collect based on what was cut?
Correct guess, two of those, and then there's one just a regular.
Yep, um, okay. Motion? Make a motion that the board approve the, um, cut or excavation of map 57 lot 1 and map 57 lot 2, uh, as well as the intent to cut or excavate for map 72 lot 2. I don't know what the 10-9 subother is.
I do not know either.
Hey, Chris, what's the 10-9 subother?
10-9 subother? Oh, what's this, 10-9?
Oh, okay, interest refund?
Oh, right, yeah, interest, that's a, uh...
Okay, okay. All right, so let me reword that. I'll make a motion that the board approves the report or cut, uh, report of cut or excavation from map 57 lots 1 and 2, as well as the intent to cut or excavate for map 72 lot 2, and the, um, interest refund for map 10 lot 9, sublot 12.
Second. On paper? Approved? Let's take a minute to get those passed around. And then we go on to public works.
You all received a email from Chris on, uh, what are proposing coming up for, uh, next year's purchases on two pieces of equipment?
Can you hold on for a second?
Yeah.
So, this is new, this is the new employee, right?
That is the, yes, this is the new full-time...
Okay.
Employee.
And this is?
That is, uh, hard time going to full-time, I should've given you something to go with that, to explain that. That is a per diem going to career slot.
Okay.
I didn't realize that was getting to you, and it did, so, uh, that is somebody that's here going from per, per diem role to a full-time role.
If that's, are you guys good with that, because that's all we have on this is, there's no backup on this, but Chris just explained it?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Hello, Sean.
Hello.
We are gonna go over now, uh, some future investments into the highway department?
Yes.
And Sean is going to explain them.
Yeah, we just wanted to continue the budget prep discussions with, um, you know, priorities for next year that are on the staff's mind, like we did with Courtney last time around.
Yep.
Uh, talk through some concepts on that, uh, that, and we gave you the CIP stuff, because as we're kind of muddling through that. We, we see a couple of big-ticket, uh, items on the radar for next year, and then another one for the year after that, so we wanted to talk about those kind of globally. Uh, and then also the concept of weight limits, so Sean put some stuff together for you, uh, and then maybe a little bit on the gravity.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, over the next two years is three major pieces of equipment that are looking to be replaced. A ten-wheel dump truck, uh, the front-end loader, and the, and the grader. Two of those pieces of equipment I would ask to be replaced next year. And that would be the two thousand six international dump truck for the plow and wing, and the Komatsu loader. The dump truck replacement cost is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. The loader's replacement cost is a hundred and eighty-two thousand. There is some trade values, and it will depend at the time that we do this, or if we do this, what that value is. And then the third piece of equipment in the second year will be the grader. And that, that is a cost of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So these are, this is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment purchases in two years, which is a large amount of money.
Do we have any, any, uh, capital reserves?
Uh, we've got enough for the loader.
Okay.
We're, we're around a hundred and eighty.
Okay.
So, with that said, I looked at some different alternatives to try to offset this cost and save some money. The truck and the loader are a necessity, and a vital piece of, um, pieces of equipment for, uh, fighting the snow and doing what we do in the winter time. Uh, the grader was something that I looked into extensively and ran the amount of hours that the grader is run, um, through the town. And, um, I talked to a local contractor who has a new grader and asked for a price to grade the, um, class-five town gravel roads. And that number came back, it was quite surprising. He came back at a hundred dollars an hour to do that. So he was supply and operated the grader and a laborer. Um, we spend about two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty hours annually grading the class-five town gravel roads. And approximately another hundred and fifteen hours doing the emergency lanes. Those are numbers based on, since I've been here, so they, they can go up and down, but tha- that's an average. So, what I would ask for, first of all, is that you approve the, and, uh, the purchase of the, uh, the replacement of the international dump truck and the Komatsu loader. And that we take a hard look at perhaps contracting out the grading, the grader work, um, over the purchase. Because the cost is, savings is significant. Uh, let Chris talk a little...
Before we go any further about that subject, I want to ask a question for you. In the article that, uh, oh, sorry, the few favorite, that, um, Chris sent to us, said the local vendor will be willing to do class-five roads, but not emergency lanes.
Correct.
So how would you, and now we're in a lawsuit and all that's going on, if that passes, the town does have to obtain those roads.
Mm-hmm.
If we subbed it out to him, how do you plan on taking care of that without a grader?
Well, they would, we would have to go probably go, first of all, go back to the original plan and purchase a grader, a new grader.
What would the grader we got now, I mean, will you keep that? I mean, if, if you go with the...
But that was another option that, that's out there as well. There's not much of a trade-in value right now. When I got basic, um, preliminary estimates, uh, the value of that grader is around twenty thousand dollars traded. So there's an...
Twenty thousand?
Yeah.
How much newer is the guy's grader than the John Deere?
Pardon me?
What year is the guy's John Deere that he's using?
Uh, it's two thousand and twelve, thirteen, something like that. It's fairly new. So I don't have the exact date on that, but I can get you that, to be more precise, John.
Yep.
But, um...
How, so, um, just the way that he does it, is it, um, is he doing this for more than one town? And, like, if he only has one grader, like, what would be the responsiveness and all of that?
Well, it would be scheduled according to when I need him to come in and do it. So it's, it's all scheduling that goes into effect. Yes, he does do grading for other towns as well.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So back to the question on the grader, as far as what the emergency lanes were and stuff. So if, it, what the, what happens in the lawsuit is yet to be determined, obviously. We, if we get stuck with them, then we're gonna have to reevaluate this whole idea, and perhaps we will have to buy a grader. But if it doesn't turn out that way, but we still have in, in the interim to maintain those, and we don't have a lot of trade-in value with the grader, we, we just keep the one we have.
And you could do the...
Emergency one.
Have the contractor do the other one, yeah? Twenty-five grand's pretty good for doing all of them, I mean, the contractor. Is it?
Pardon me?
Pretty good price, twenty-five grand to do all the...
Right, that's a hundred dollars an hour. That comes with two people and a, and a grader.
Pretty, not bad.
That's, yeah, that's a very good deal.
So, Sean, it looks like from the spreadsheet that you put together for the grading...
Mm-hmm.
Going with the contractor, it looks like it's about fifty thousand savings per year.
Correct.
But what's, what's happening in twenty-nine and twenty-thirty, where it's seven?
The, the savings shrink as you get out of the, the purchase period for the, uh, the capital cost goes away, so you're, you know... If you, it depends on how long you stretch the lease payments out for. This is modeled at five years, I think. So it's really the capital cost.
For the, for the contracting it out, though?
No, for, uh, for purchasing, the savings go, drop off as you pay, as you compare it to paying off the capital cost of, of purchasing.
Okay. Okay. And would he want some kind of a contract, like, multi-year contract?
That's what I would like to set up with him. I've already broached that subject with him, and yes, he will do that.
Like, what timeframe would you be looking at?
I would, uh, I'd do, try to get a three-year out of it.
What's, what's your sense of, um, other vendor availability regarding...
Rage, uh, prices are a lot higher when, uh, we're getting the hometown discount with this contractor. That, that was point blank said, that he would like to work, you know, close to home, and that's why he gave such a good rate. But I looked at other rates for graders, and I pulled the city of Dover's, uh, contractor bid list that they use to go out for stuff with equipment that they don't have. And it's three hundred dollars an hour. You get three hundred and four hundred dollar mobilization fees in and out, so it can be quite costly.
What would be the backup if, like, say, year two of the contract, he all of a sudden went out of business or something? What would be our backup then?
That would, uh, I don't, I don't know. We would, if we still had the other loader, we'd have that, I mean, other grader, we do have that to fall back on.
Yeah.
Um, but that's, that's the only answer I have at this time.
Yeah, because I would imagine there's a significant lead time on ordering a, a grader.
He has the grader.
No, no, I mean, if, if, as a backup, if we had to do that, there would be a significant lead.
There's mutual aid agreements amongst communities and municipalities and things of that nature. I, I'm confident that something could come in and take care of anything that we needed to, and the loader is very capable of, of taking care of things, um, too.
Could you just quickly talk through the condition of the international that we're...
All right.
Disposed of and the loader?
So...
Why are we getting rid of the truck?
The, the two thousand six international has two hundred and twenty-four thousand miles on it. It's a frontline plow truck that served for fifteen winters. Uh, the truck, it's not a reliable truck in the wintertime. It breaks down constantly with either mechanical, electrical issues. It, it, it's been sidelined many times, leaving plow roots unattended and snow building up and complaints coming in. Uh, at the escalating maintenance costs on it every year, and it's just, it's the freakiest thing, they just break. Like, last year, we had fuel tank went in the middle of a, a snowstorm, where they lost all the lights on at once. Um, they've lost motors out of it, the, uh, clutches. Yeah.
Is a two hundred and forty thousand gonna be a new sander, a new wing with plow in the truck?
Yes.
Or is it, that's just the truck?
No, that's a completely set-up truck, plow, wing, sander.
So if we bought a new, we couldn't use the...
We trade it in.
As, everything that's on the truck now, the plow, the wing, the sander, it's on the truck now.
Yeah.
You probably want those to be different standards, uh, like, bed controls and stuff like that.
Correct, we, we'll more automated stuff, very, with ground speed control and stuff, that, you know, it has, uh, it's, it, I don't know. It, it's more economically friendly. As far as what the material is put out, it's, uh, advanced. It's got the variable speed controls and stuff where it's, it bases the spreading of the material on the speed of the truck and, and how it's covering the ground.
Will it do a better job with the materials that are being stuck in the sander? As for rocks and...
The rocks is the nature of the beast, and how we obtain our...
Breaks them off.
Pardon me?
Breaks them off.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, if we're using dirt from our pit, still at the time of the new sander, with the, with the, I mean, I'm asking if the new sander is gonna be better than the old ones, and... Or is it gonna have the same opportunity to break because of the material we're shoving into it?
Perhaps, yes.
So it's more of just the technology difference the sander's gonna bring, is more just the fact of using it for speed variables, more control operations on it?
Right.
As for what you stick in, it's still the same?
Correct.
We can come back to that when we talk about the ground today.
Oh, I know, that's, but, you know, everything leads up to another subject, so we, we know how that goes.
So that's, that's the truck, if you have any, you have more questions on that?
No, so just trying to understand the timing. So what you, what you would like to see is the loader and, um, so, on this CIP, you've got loader, ten-wheel, um, dump truck. So those you'd like to both see in twenty twenty-one, but we've probably at least got in capital reserve enough to carry, cover the dump truck. So we'd be talking about one eighty-one-ish.
No, we have enough in the cap, to cover the loader.
We have enough to cover the loader.
Oh.
We don't have enough to cover the dump truck.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, so, either way, we'd be looking at two hundred and forty is what you would want to put in this budget for...
Correct.
Next year. Then for the twenty-two, there are also, there's a util, utility truck...
Mm-hmm.
Purchase here?
Yeah, that's replaced in the, uh...
And that says withdrawal from capital reserve funds, we would have enough for that as well?
If we continue to make the deposits that we, uh, on the second page is what we outlined, I don't mind, it's not, just me taking Sean's stuff and...
Yeah, yeah.
She wanted the CIP. If we, uh, continue to make the contributions to the CIP that we listed on the second page there, which is fifty to eighty thousand, we both keep the rate, the impact stable... And are able to make those purchases on this schedule.
Okay.
Now, that all hinges on a lease purchase of the dump truck.
Yep.
Right? And...
Yeah, we don't, we're not, I mean, we can look at a MAC, you can look at international, you can look at whatever, right? It's gonna be, or...
We're kind of, we're married to MAC now.
Okay.
That's what, the fleet is, that, you know, the internationals, but we're looking to get rid of, this is the last of...
So here's, here's a good, uh, question, it's sticky on the spot. If you had to choose, you can get a loader, or you get a dump truck. What do you choose?
Dump truck.
Okay. And I ask it just because of the fact that if we already have so much in the capital reserve, you know, it's spending one thing, you know, the next year, if one can be pushed off, that's an extra fifty thousand, or whatever we can have, that we can use towards the next purchase, where, you know, I mean...
Yep, no.
No, I'm just going...
We're not going into it, it's, you know, we're, we're planning ahead, so... Two big purchases like this is usually not in the, um, the idea of how Nottingham works when we purchase stuff.
Except for one's...
More conservatively and...
Except for one's covered by capital reserve.
Just one, right.
Yeah. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna...
We're not putting anything until the next one, though.
Well, no, there'd still be money going in.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd still be money going in.
Yeah, part of what we're, part of the, the hand we're dealt is that the, the loader and the grader are gonna end up having similar lifespans, and they were bought originally a year or two apart, so we're... Ideally, we would, you know, spread these out a little bit better, but...
Right, you don't stay there about five years or so, you don't want those big purchases back-to-back like they're set up now.
Yep. But the grader isn't, it's not a decision we have to make now, because you're putting it in for twenty twenty-two.
Right, I just wanted to...
And, and, yes, and so, I mean, we can see a year from now where we are with a lawsuit, right? And make a better decision then, next year at this time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I asked a question, right. I was asking about the, the loader and the dump truck. You choose between those two.
Yes, that was your question.
That wasn't, all right, just, well, grader came out, I just wanted to make sure that...
The only, the only thing is that, uh, to your point of waiting on that decision, is it may impact how much we ask the voters to put into the capital reserve fund in twenty-one. A marginal difference, not a, you know, not a budget busting difference, but tens of thousands different, whether we... You know, if we were to take on, we want to keep the tax impact as stable as we can, we take on a lease payment, we may want to pull back on the deposits into the reserve fund.
Okay.
Right? So we have to think about that.
Okay.
That capital reserve deposit, if you, you know, if you start talking about putting things off, and we have to, while we're doing that, we have to put money in the bank in order for that to pay off.
But if we try the contracting, we won't, we won't do anything for a grader. We're just getting the other equipment, and we'll...
But...
We have to increase the operating...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
To pay for that.
Right. At least it's a lot, a lot less than putting away to buy one, like twenty-five grand, I mean.
Yeah, I get it. I just, I think it's gonna be, like, you wouldn't want to sign a contract, a three-year contract with somebody, and then find out three months later... That, you know, the town has to keep maintaining the emergency lanes, and now, all of a sudden, we need a new grader, but we're locked into a contract.
Right, we'd have to have an escape clause.
Okay. 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 All right.
All right. Then the other one for the next year is the 2009 Komatsu front-end loader, 10,000 hours on it. The, that's a frontline piece of equipment, which is a vital piece of, you know, fighting for snowstorms, whether it's loading sanders and salters or going around moving snow piles and things of that nature. The machine is constantly running, so very vital piece of equipment. And the hours are out there now and it's starting to show signs of fatigue and breakdowns and things, so it's there.
I have another question, but...
It's all right.
It's off this subject, it's on to another subject, but it's related to you, so it's why I want to ask.
We continue to slowly pay the price for these vehicles living outside.
Right.
The grader's never, has never been inside.
And, and, yeah, and the wash facilities in the winter time make it hard to get the longevity out of the vehicles as far as giving a good, proper cleaning and stuff, so...
You don't see that on any given day, but I imagine there are places that see loaders last longer than 14.
Yeah, yep, 20 years.
Is there any place in town that you think would be suitable to build wash point?
Yeah, Smoke Street Pit.
Yeah? Is it, is it, there's enough space there to make a shed big enough to drive the machine in with the proper...
Yep.
Concrete basin and pumps and...
Oh, absolutely.
Sediment boards and all that?
Yes.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Is wash machine, does that settle, does that solve the problem or is it that plus a desire to store them indoors?
Well, there's a desire to store them indoors, but yes, that helps considerably being able to desalt these vehicles after the snowstorms and things of that nature where they've been out running for, you know, a couple of days straight, get the salt off of them, the underneath the wheels. I mean, for instance, a dump truck just happened a month ago where hauling gravel from Rochester back to here and one of the wheels broke, it rotted out, the whole, the center of it, salt just ate it. It's just, those are the things that happen.
How, what would be the, what would be the ballpark cost of putting in like a washing station?
I have no idea, but I can get some numbers and talk to one of our consulting engineers that does that, designs public works facilities and has...
Be a good number to have.
Yeah.
Is there anything else, Sean, that you see, like any other, like are the other department costs going to remain pretty level or is there anything else that you're concerned about that we might need to be looking at increasing the operating budget or...
As far as the operating budget and the line items as they are now, they seem to be adequate and working out. It's these, the big ticket items, the vehicles and the housing that are the, the things that are going to, that are coming to the forefront.
Okay. Because like, is that, I mean, even like the washing station, is that something we should be putting in the CIP now?
Yeah, I think you're, as we get to talking about the gravel pit, I think we're going to, we're going to start talking about that as well.
Okay, okay.
That, that is the priority from, granted, we, you know, we have what we have, we, we just, you know, put a water source into it, but, you know, we don't fit in there anymore, the, you know, vehicles we have. And you can fit the four dumps in there now.
We can fit one, two, three dump trucks. One of them is put outside.
Okay, so three dumps and the 550...
And 550 go in.
Can fit in there, but we still have, you know, nearly half the fleet outside, so that's the overall challenge. Combine that with the, you know, the fuel tank thing lingers, it's a back of the line thing, it's okay now, but, you know, it's back there.
We've been, yeah, we've had a couple of issues with that in the past and the fuel, we have been some needing a treatment that's about 5,000 to 6,000 a year now, which has been working out and stuff, but, you know, it's just little things down there that are starting to...
Yep.
...chirp.
Yep.
But fully, fully staffed on the highway side consistently for quite a while now, that's been a treat.
Mm-hmm.
We do have one, an opening for a seasonal plow driver for this coming winter. But other than that, we got a good crew.
No, yeah, everything's fine, everything's working out well.
Nice job, Sean.
Thank you.
How long you been here? A year and a half.
A year and a half, yeah.
Nice.
Good job.
So those are, that's my CIP for the next couple of years and what I'm thinking. I just wanted to give you guys, you know, a little taste of what perhaps may be coming and what your think, thoughts. Another thing that I would like to implement would be a blessing is the posting of weight limits on the roads in the, at the end of the winter during the spring months as the frost comes out of the ground and the mud starts, basically mud season, so that we can protect the roads that we have now and start cutting back on the maintenance costs, which would help.
How do we police that?
Pardon me?
How do we police, so we're just going to say no more, no more timber cuttings, no more, I mean, I don't know, I have no idea, so...
You would post every road. It's, it's covered under the state law, it's under chapter 231. Towns are allowed to post weight limits on roads for during these months. You obviously, septic trucks are allowed, milk trucks, oil trucks, things of that nature. You're not being stringent with everybody. If somebody's got something going on and they need to get a heavy vehicle in and out, you work with them in the early mornings when the ground is still frozen and they can go in until like 10, 11 o'clock and then you shut them down. It's because it's the afternoon when the sun gets high at those times of the year and everything starts to melt, that, that becomes the problem. The idea is to protect what we have while that frost comes out of the ground.
So I'm sorry, did you say every road?
That, yes, what I'm asking, every road.
Okay. What's the, what's the, what's the downside of it?
It's just, it hinders people from, like tri- axles and people building houses like that are shut down for a little while as far as getting their materials to and from until frost comes out of the ground. As I said, though, you can make exceptions and work with people because sometimes, you know, the mornings are very cold, the ground is refrozen and that is the, that's an opportune time to get those larger vehicles in and get that stuff delivered up. And, and that is, that's, that's very workable to do.
Except during, you know, a two-week thaw in March or something, you can't, you can't codify it and say it's always this time.
Right.
Because it's weather driven and you...
Right, right.
There's actually a link we follow through the state which has the sections of every, all the sections of the state and what the ground temperatures are. So you're able to watch them as they're rising to know when it's going to happen.
Do, do many towns around here do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're the last.
So like Northwood and...
Northwood, Barrington, Lee, yeah.
Yeah, we get calls routinely from commercial enterprises that time of year.
Saying, can I?
Are your roads posted? And we're like, no, do what you want, you know, we have, no, we have nothing. And it's a surprise to them because they're accustomed to...
Right.
These are the, you know, these are the bigger, you know, the oil companies and...
Right.
Utilities and the, you know, things like that, they're just part of doing business.
But it, it's not the home delivery stuff, it's not the oil trucks, it's not the...
Right, no, they won't be prohibiting that.
Do we need, just to give a verbal response or do we need...
No, no, there's a, there's a whole process to this. There would be a public hearing, you, you're going to, it's something you will ordain. We will draft something for you to consider and in order to, you know, write tickets on it, we, it's got to go through a process of, of approval. We just didn't want to invest the time and energy in that without talking to you first about the concept. You know, and I think the objection or the indifference to it in the past has probably been that obstruction of commerce question and just, you know, Nottingham's general laissez-faire approach of things, just part of who we are here and it's fine, but we are the last, certainly of our budding towns.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm supportive of it.
Yeah, me too. So the, the question you have for us is, are we ready to see draft ordinance policy, what have you?
Yeah, and what, and what, the thing that we had in mind was a, Sean had a number, was it 26?
Oh, 26,000 pounds, yeah.
26,000 pounds is kind of a standard thing. So that's key point number one. Key point number two would be that you would authorize the public works director to set the dates and the, and the exceptions, so that, you know, when it, when there are trucks that need to come through, he can work with them to do that. You'd be giving him that position, that authority as part of the ordinance. Those are the two big pieces that we got to thus far. And we'll look at what other people have done in more detail.
Well, it seems to me to make sense if we're being a little more proactive and forward-thinking to, as you say, protect what we have.
Right.
Sean, are bridges posted in terms of weight limits already?
Yes.
All right, and that's the same rationale that applies? There's a legal process, you know?
On the, well...
On the bridges or...
The bridges are rated as far, yeah, I don't think I follow the question.
I don't either. I was just asking, are they posted?
It's not the ice and, you know, melt issue, it's different, it's just the weight, what the bridge can bear.
Yeah, I mean, we have a bridge in town that's, obviously had its weight limit changed because it's failing, so...
Yeah.
And that's posted as well.
Right.
That's a culvert.
It's got a weight limit.
Straighten him out, Chris.
So here's my little question.
I gotta take little opportunities like that.
It was, Sean was on our accounts payable that we just had, it looked like last month, we had something called roadside mowing.
Yeah.
It's a company, Telco. What is, I mean, what is roadside mowing? Like what's he using and what's he doing for the amount of money that we got charged?
He's using a four-wheel-drive John Deere tractor with a large, what is it, five or six-foot flail mower with deck on and he's able to cut back into the swell lines, a good, some places eight, 10 feet back and take the canopy right, the encroachment of the roadside vegetation right away from the road and open up line of sight.
Where was this done on a lot of the...
Where was it? Lucas Pond Road, Jabig Road, Freeman Hall Road, Garland Road, Priest Road, Canard, Smoke Street, McCullough, Flutter.
Just a good-sized number for something called roadside mowing, so in case somebody would have to see it, it'd just be a question of...
An actual number...
What are you actually doing for that number?
An actual number to mow the whole town annually is $25,000.
We don't own a tractor, do we?
We don't, we don't, piece of equipment that does that.
Lucas Pond was a mess, like the, the sumac trees had literally, like started, in some places started to mash over the road like, like you're going through an archway. It was, the line of sight was, was awful. And he came through, what was it, August?
Yeah.
Yeah, I came home back from work that day and I saw it was all wide open, it was cut back about 10 feet most of the way. It was, that's not somebody pushing a, pushing a mower up and down the side of the street.
It's a special, it's a specialty piece of equipment.
Helps with snowmelt too, right?
Mm-hmm.
As you open that up and get more sunlight on the road, that pays dividends.
Isn't that reason for me?
All right, so we will, we'll come back to you, well, we won't do it in two weeks because you don't want to do that, but maybe in two meetings from now, we'll come back to you on a draft ordinance on weight limits.
So, and one other thing that I've been looking at and I've had to get some money, but we had a study done and waiting for the numbers, they're slowly trickling and we had a gravel pit analysis done about the life expectancy and what's in that pit for material. As nobody, there's no historical data written anyplace of what we've been taking out of there and what's going on, so... And then I looked at the opportunity to see if, what kind of revenue that, that may have, may be able to produce for the town to offset costs and when... So we had some work done and there's 15,000 cubic yards of New Hampshire DOT gravel in there. There's 12,000 cubic yards of New Hampshire DOT sand and then there's 130,000 cubic yards of non-spec material, which is just not sure yet where they can use it, but it's usable material, so...
Like fill?
Ah, it could be septic sand and stuff like that. I just don't have exactly what it can be used for, cement perhaps, it can be used for as well. That was another thing that was talked about. So we have these, these numbers. Right now, we're in the process of contacting a couple of large construction companies that do pit leases to find out what value it may have for the town, what kind of income. Usually how this operates, you base, you get so many dollars on, on a yard out of, out of the contractor that's paid to the town.
So wait, so it's because there's so much material out there that we don't need it all that we can...
They wouldn't be able to generate revenue that can go towards other things that we need that is coming up in the future.
This material, we can't, we, we're not going to be using anyways.
Right.
Yeah, so the, one of the changes that you've seen, you're going to have to speak more to this than me, but one of the changes that you've seen us make is the materials that we're putting on our gravel roads. Up until two years ago, two and a half years ago, we were just taking whatever we had for a bit and spreading it on the gravel roads and we switched and you should...
We, we switched all but to, to using stone, which obviously the, it was a different, it was a little culture change around here. But what's been happening with the sand, and I found this out as far as when we did a ledge farm road project, that the sand, you keep putting the sand on the gravel roads, all you're doing is clogging it up. It's not, it can't drain anymore. And so that's one thing. This other thing you do when you sand, the sand on a light, little, little, what is it, three, 30 seconds of an inch of snow covers sand. So, and it doesn't hold up if there's a little bit of a melt and then it refreezes, it just refreezes as ice. So we use the stone, the stone is three-quarters, you can hear up to, you know, half inch, three-quarters, inch of snow and you still have that traction there. That stone is still there. Even when it refreezes, it sticks up and above and that worked out well last year because we only had to chain up once last year to go out and we got ahead of the storms as far as when we knew if it was going to be an ice event or something with some rain, we would go up with the stone down. And that way there, we were all set, we had something to grip. So that helped out a lot as far as what we're doing. It's a little bit more costly, I mean, the sand obviously doesn't cost anything because you're pulling it out of there, purchasing the stone, but it, we didn't have any, I think Gunnison, we had no accidents last year on the dirt roads.
And so the sand that you're putting on asphalt roads, out of the sand that's in the dump truck, uh...
Is the screened sand that comes...
You're, you're producing that in the pit?
Yes.
Screening it?
Yeah. But we're still not removing all the rock content in it, so, and it's not a sharp sand or a washed sand where you get the sharpness and you lose the rock. That's how most purchased sands go in, in other municipalities, it's a wash, it has a certain sieve analysis and it comes back and you don't have any rock. What you have is a certain sharpness and our rock is our sharpness in our sand. But we only can screen out up to like three-quarters and that's it, as far as the way that we do it.
And the, one of those, one of those classifications of, you'll, when we get numbers, we'll give you the map and all that stuff, but we're, we're, we're working harder and harder to find the, the material to screen within the pit.
Yes, that's running out and it's actually, it might be, it might not be that cost-effective because if we have, the gravels are a rarity now in this area, good bank run gravel. We have that down there, but that's the stuff that we're taking out of the ground to make our sand with. So we need to look at those numbers. What, what is the value of a cubic yard of sand, of gravel going out versus us pulling it out of the ground and screening it and turning it into winter sand?
Yeah, so what, what we're going to come back to you with, what is this stuff worth and what is it, what would our cost be to replace it? You know, could we, could we get more value out of our pit by selling it off than digging it up, screening it and putting it on the roads relative to just... and putting it on the roads relative to just having some debris in the sand? It seems counterintuitive. Like, wait a minute, you got a gravel pit, why do you ever want white sand? But what we have may actually have quite a lot of value, so.
Right.
That's, that's the math that we're doing.
We just don't know what we don't know, what's going on in there, so.
It's good.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Sean, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And when, we would like to welcome the fire chief, Jay Bilcek.
Hello, Fire Chief, how are you?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies.
How are y'all? Good.
Yeah, so pretty much the same intro for chief. You haven't seen him for a while, so we thought we'd drag him in and say hello, but.
We never see them till they come and ask for something.
Yeah, he wasn't looking to come and ask. I said, hey, you know, there's CIP stuff that, that eventually leads to operating budget stuff. Uh, these are things, I'm not even gonna hear anything new from him tonight, but we haven't talked about it in the last.
CIP, CIP-wise, everyone have a chance to review to draft CIP? Has anyone seen it? We go at thirty thousand foot discussion of CIP. CIP for the out-years includes a request for a hundred thousand dollars to the Capitol Reserve to try to beef that up for apparatus.
Did that get sent to us?
You have his, uh, annual submissions already, but not, not charting or anything.
One, two. I only have two things.
It's the last two pages of.
It's only two things, though.
Right, yes, that's, there's only a couple of major, uh, things that are different.
Okay.
Yep, yes, Capitol Reserve deposit request for a hundred thousand dollars through the out-years each, each year to beef up our apparatus replacement fund and SCBA replacement fund.
What do we have now, chief?
In there?
What do we have now?
Fifty-seven thousand, I believe, okay? Last, last year.
This year from a hundred to fifty, Italian.
But that was supposed to be one time.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think we could recover because our next plan, then I'll give you a little, you know, top-level strategy for apparatus. Twenty-twenty-nine, engine two needs to be replaced. Right now, we're looking at a tanker, our tanker is seventeen years old, but if you look at the usage of the tanker, it equals the mileage of our two thousand and nineteen engine two. It's around eighteen thousand miles on it. I'm looking to stretch the tanker as long as possible with, right now, a target being out there for a thirty-year lifespan for that, that tanker. I'm, you know, barring any major mechanical issues with it, that's what I'm looking at, okay? Right now, like I said, planned engine two would be replaced in twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-thirty era because it's, it was put in service in twenty-nineteen. Twenty, twenty, two thousand nine, excuse me. I'm not used to two thousands yet, so, we're twenty years into it. There's other strategies there. If the tanker did fail, you know, there's a possibility of moving engine three into that role. Slight modification, just adding a porta tank and taking the ladder off it and buying a, an engine instead of the tanker. But right now, we're, we're looking good with apparatus-wise. SCBA's, is that one that's gonna creep up on? Fifteen years from now, fourteen years, we're, we're one year into the lifespan of the SCBA's. By then, we don't know, you know, fourteen years, what's, what's the science gonna be like, what's the recertification gonna be like, so that sort of stuff. Next year, shouldn't be much of a surprise. I believe I briefed the board. It's over a year ago, it was the summer, so, about the future of, of the fire department, what I see the future to be. I'm requesting, right now, twenty-two thousand dollar for modifications to the station to create bunk space up in the mezzanine area to help us migrate into a twenty-four-hour coverage. Twenty-twenty-three.
Ask Chris, I mean, I've never been up to the top of the mezzanine.
Yep.
And I think a mezzanine is a big, open area with no walls, no nothing.
This is true.
Okay, I don't know if that's what it looks like up there.
Yes, it does. It looks like open concept, like somebody's loft right now, okay, so.
So you're keeping like, taking off like, half of that space area, or?
Negative, it's probably less than a third, right around a third. Put in two bunk rooms right now, okay? On the Route one fifty-two side is where we were thinking of putting them on.
Okay.
Right now, there's a cage up there that we keep, keep gear and other things secure, that they don't just, you know, it's a cage that we lock things up. There's some exercise equipment that we move down, that sort of stuff. There's plenty of room up there, that's for sure. We're not looking at taking half of it. So, that twenty-two thousand dollar estimate does not include any modifications to the alarm system, but I think that, that shouldn't, shouldn't be a big showstopper. Put in a pool station or so and a couple enunciators in a room or whatever, strobes in the rooms, that sort of stuff. Modifications. Just piggyback onto our existing alarm system, okay?
Hey, so Jay, just wanted to stand, when you say convert to a two-unit bunk area, is it like two separate rooms with bunk beds in each?
Two separate rooms with a single, single bed in each, yes, yep, yep.
Oh, the shower and all that stuff, too, or?
Shower is downstairs, already existing. Yes, we do have a shower downstairs, yep. And we wouldn't be putting, you know, obviously the heads down on the first floor, too. We wouldn't be putting any facilities up there, so.
That's pretty simple, relatively speaking.
Yep.
Good.
I think, you know, the big part is there is, you know, converting the modifications to the ventilation system to, you know, use the air conditioning system and also the heating system, the forced hot air aspects of, of the office space. There, there's some modifications in there that would have to be done, okay?
So is that something that's being estimated as well?
It's included in there.
Included in the seventeen?
The twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twelve, got it.
Yeah, the only surprise in the twenty-two is the alarm system part's not in there, so that's, I think we'll work with that. You go out to twenty-twenty-three, the elephant in the room here is, let's go back again.
Twenty-twenty-three or twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah.
The elephant in the room has to do with the hiring of three more full-time staff. We talked about before to double our staff to provide twenty-four hours, six-day-a-week, and also add for a twenty-four-hour per diem coverage for that Sunday. Right now, we don't cover, you know, we cover full-time six, seven days a week, but they're solo on weekends when we're fully staffed. We're not fully staffed right now. We have two full-time. We have one opening yet. We've been augmenting with per diem to fill the other slot, and that's getting tougher and tougher anyway, okay? You know, when we get into more depth, I can give you metrics on, on call times and response times and things like that. You know, when we have, when we have a crew in the station, it's gonna come down to what the town wants in terms of, you know, what they want to pay for, for coverage. But the numbers are, the numbers as far as response time speak for themselves, so, okay? So, you know, that's, that's a three hundred thousand dollar increase in twenty-twenty-two to, to go to that kind of staffing.
Do you think we'll need it in twenty-twenty-two?
I think we could use it now, okay? I'm telling you, you know, as far as staffing goes, as far as call members, you know, we've got the same dedicated members, they're not falling from the sky. People aren't beating the doors down to
Volunteer.
To, to join, even in a call, even in a per diem fashion, okay? You know, we're, we're making do what we got. It's, this has been a unique year, okay, as far as, you know, besides, you know, with the COVID stuff and providing the coverage for the shifts and things like that. But I, I don't think, I don't think we can go on, we can't go on forever with, with the posture that we have right now. So it's gonna depend on what the town wants for, for services, that's for sure.
So, Jay, refresh my memory, the two that we have that are full-time now, six days a week, what hours is the coverage?
Seven to five. Okay, that's, that's seven to five, but there's per diem opportunities in the evening, and it's getting harder and harder to fill those up. I have call members and/or one of our former full-time, John Goldrick, who went to Manchester. He comes, he's been working, he's been working Mondays per diem for us during the day, filling in one of the full-time slots, so. But in the evening, in the evening, we're filling it with call members and anybody else who wants per diem, even full-time people. Some of the, some of the former full-time people are on that roster. That if they want, they could fill in a shift. That shift is from six PM to ten PM, and that's been beneficial, and again, I could bring you all kinds of metrics with how that's improved our response times and service to the community in the evening, okay? And again, most of that, it's two people on. It has to do with the, the medical responses, the calls for med calls. So, we've been filling that in. We did put in for more. We got, we got an increase last year in, in the per diem budget to fill in for Sunday evenings. One of the things where on Sunday evenings, I was gonna try to get a, a twelve-hour coverage. Honestly, with this past year, I've been able to fill that shift maybe about four times. But we filled other shifts per diem during the COVID, during the whole height of COVID, which we're not out of the woods yet. We've been filling other shifts with having people work on Saturday from six PM till ten PM. And, you know, when you, you slice and dice my metrics, you take a look at our response times and our ability to cover calls and inability to cover medical calls, you'll, you'll see that, you know, it's, it's, there's, there's a heavy toll on, on our, on our call members, and I don't think we could expect, you know, expect to do that forever, okay, so.
Okay, the move to round-the-clock schedule, the driving factor in that is that we have less and less of a call force that we can really depend on. The people we have, we can depend on, but they're not growing, they're aging, so the, the change in the call force. I'm trying to say this politely in my expression, these things, consulting people are doing homework. So that, that call force is changing.
Yep.
That's driving factor number one. Driving factor number two would be retention?
Our retention, because then we would be more competitive in terms of schedule, and also in terms of hours and stuff, it would increase because they would be working a twenty-four, twenty-four on, two days off, twenty-four on, sort of stuff. So that would give them forty-eight hour, it would be a normal forty-eight-hour work week for them, okay, so.
And that, that's one of the things that we hear from a lot of people leaving is that, that scheduling opportunity is.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
What, one thing that's not in your numbers is what it's gonna take to supervise twice as many people? Is, um, what, I mean, is this a job for a part-time chief?
No, long-term, long-term, I think we should have the discussion offline. I can tell you what my thoughts are for the long-term, but I'd rather not broach it right now, okay? I think we ought to have that in a, in a personnel kind of one there, okay, I can, I can.
Kind of just one question, what is long-term? Five years from now, nine years?
Well, let's, let's, let's push that, okay.
Okay, I mean.
Yep, I'd like to have that discussion, you know, before, you know, okay?
But this plan here, Jay, would be too, like, I understand, so they come in and do their twenty-four hours or whatever. And, I mean, this is gonna keep them here, because that's, right now, they don't know what their shift is, what hours they're really working, or they change all the time.
Uh, not, not really. Right now, with a fully, a fully-staffed, uh, three people, they're on a two-week rotation and it is pretty, pretty standard. We do an A, B, C shift where one works from Monday through Thursday, four tens, okay? The B, B person works Tuesday through Friday, again, ten hours to four tens, and the C person will work Friday through Monday. Saturday and Sunday, there, there's only one full-time person on and they're augmented. Once upon a time, I used to schedule my officers, they would have mandatory duty that day. Well, we've, we've, we've migrated from that, that gave them opportunity to work per diem. We wanted somebody, a second person there in the station, and that number has, has dwindled too because some, some people have opted out because their weekends are obviously, they're valuable to them, okay? Because they have full-time jobs and family opportunities. So, yeah, as far as the schedule right now, it is pretty, pretty, it is pretty fixed. Every two weeks, they do rotate.
Yep.
There's pluses and minuses to that, four-ten. Every third rotation, they end up with, what, six days off in a row before they have to come back. When they go from, when they go from a C to an A shift, I believe they get like six days off, so. So, you know, part of the thing is they can't, can't schedule, you know, other things. It's no secret, a lot, a lot, a lot of firefighters do things on the side because it'll schedule, okay? Either business, they have their own businesses and things. It makes it a little easier for them to do what they have to do, so. Right, I'll, I'll take that opportunity whenever you could pencil me in, we could talk about that, okay?
Give it in the pot.
Give it in the pot.
Okay.
I thought you were set up for that.
No, but, I'd like to breach that.
What's the, so on, on the, the safer grant from FEMA, it says significant cost sharing for the first four years.
It's, I believe it reduces by twenty-five. They'll pay, they'll pay the salaries in full for the first year, then it goes down to seventy-five percent, fifty percent, twenty-five, and then you own them. I believe that's what, that's what, that's what the, that, that's the way it has been operated in the past. It's not a given, obviously, okay, because it's, it's a federal grant, okay? It's been, it's been around for a few years and you get your feet wet and you own the total cost after the four-year period, so, okay? We go out to twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-three.
We don't have any.
Okay, you don't?
We just had those two.
We need an ambulance coming, right?
That's right. I, I show an ambulance out here.
That comes out of the ambulance fund, so.
In twenty-twenty-three, and one of my strategies right now that I'm, I'm leaning towards, and I could provide the data and, and obviously, is, is not to replace our current ambulance. If you remember in two thousand and seventeen when we bought our type-one that chassis, I said we would keep it longer. Twenty-twenty-three, we'll put it out to the five, six-year range, which isn't, I, I would, I would recommend that we consider keeping that for two reasons. One is the trade-in value, and I have the numbers, but not ready to share right now. Projected trade-in value is out there and won't, won't be very lucrative, okay? The truck's worth more to us than I think it is on a trade-in. It's a, it's our first four-wheel drive, it's on a diesel chassis, it's heavier duty than anything else. What I'm proposing buying is going back to a type-three for that purchase, a van chassis, non-four-wheel drive, and we'd use that as our primary six months, seven months out of the year, and then use the, use the type-one, the, the four-wheel-drive one in the off, you know, use it, use it as a backup for a second due, because we notice, we have, we have back-to-back calls more frequency along with our tempo is that for whatever reason, we get med calls that are back-to-back. How are you gonna staff this? Well, it would give the opportunity for the call members to be able to come out for that second due, second due ambulance run. I have numbers for, you know, the purchase of the ambulance and outfitting, what it would cost. We could stagger between. Right now, we have one ambulance. We, we go out to the six-year, five, six years. I don't have any, I have confidence in the ambulance is gonna last, you know, as far as, but any unforeseen is gonna take us out of service, some of the routine things. If we take it to a dealer to get repaired, they don't share the same urgency that I do, that I want it back the same day or within hours, okay? So, I, I, that's another thing where I think the town has grown with, with the number of calls and that we ought to, ought to be thinking about having a second, second ambulance in the barn, and I think that the one that we purchased because the, the one that we currently have would be, would be a good one to keep in that role, okay? Since it is four-wheel-drive, we already paid for that, and it gives us better, better things, okay? I, I talked about truck replacement, it's twenty, twenty-twenty-nine or so for an engine, that, that sort of stuff, okay? There's another one in here I have replacing our cascade system, and that's just a, that's a wedge thrown out there to replace our cascade, which is our compressor system for our SCBA's, and it may be hooves, if there are no issues with it, to push that to the right as far as possible, and I'll tell you why, because the next purchase, right now, SCBA pressures are changing from forty-five hundred PSI to six thousand PSI. So, in that fourteen-year range, when we go to replace the SCBA's, we may be forced to upgrade that compressor at that time to something that has six thousand PSI capability. So, it's just a, a heads-up that that compressor's been in service for quite some time. We don't have any issues with it. It gets maintained as required twice a year and, but it's something in, that, it's one of the oldest pieces we have in, in our, in our, in our fleet right now, okay? All right?
So to restate the good news, you don't need anything for about a decade.
Uh, barring any mechanical malfunctions, we're, we're doing good. been an interesting year. Besides, you know, trying to fill the slots, we picked up some unplanned expenses in the area of supplies. It's been a, earlier in the year, it was a, it was a, a constant challenge to get PPE, okay? The states come through several times on, you know, handing out the PPE. This is earlier April, May timeframe. Right now, the supply chains have opened up somewhat, and we've become more adaptive. Our requirements from the Bureau of VMS for operating as an ambulance and having a license have not been, they have not been rescinded. They're, they're auditing our reports, you know, our, I can babble for years here. Our, our, we're, we're required by law to submit a report for every patient we touch within 24 hours via, via the internet. And they've, they've changed that report, they always tailor it, that they can, to have blocks that we have to identify specifically what the PPE is that we use on the patients and ourselves and stuff like that. And they're auditing that quite frequently, because they've sent out two blanket warnings to departments that they, they, the state considers that a protocol, which they showed a protocol violation for anybody who's not adhering to those PPE standards, which are glasses, gloves, depending on N95, surgical, or above, or, or even, even, you know, the gown, depending on what the symptoms are.
That's COVID-specific.
That's COVID-specific, yes. They have not relieved, they have not relieved us of, of those requirements. If anything, they're, they're paying more attention to it. Like I said, they sent out warnings the last two weeks that we are paying attention. They're able to query it on a instantaneous basis, based on the software, okay? So they can keep track of that stuff. So anyway, my, my point is that it was a challenge earlier to obtain the PPE. The state came through and helped us out. It caused us with some unplanned expenses there, less than $2,000 in our, in our med supply line that I'm hoping to get reimbursed for. I don't, I'm looking at Chris if there's any update on that, the update on any.
Well, we got, we got, we got a pile of revenue.
Okay.
It won't necessarily find to put back to you, but.
Well, okay, my med supply line, my med supply line is taxed because of that, because there wasn't a lot of fat, and that does come out of our billing. So, you know, our last quarter, I, I've never been this lean in the 13, 14 years I've been chief in that med supply line for the last quarter, so, so we may need to do something in that area. The other areas that have been a challenge are, like I said, I've been, you know, filling the shifts, our, our, our overtime line, because I've had the full-time staff stay over either because of calls or to cover shifts. The overtime line has been, been hit pretty hard this year. The part-time line has been hit, because I've had two people that came in that worked per diem until they finished all their certifications to, to convert over to a career member. So they were getting paid out of the, the per diem line. All in all, the bottom line of, of the fire department budget is, it is what it is, and we will, we'll, we'll cover it from, from other, other lines in there. We knew this was happening earlier in the year, so we kind of watched, you know, our equipment purchases, and, you know, a lot of the training, off-site training has been shut down, so we didn't get to, we didn't get to use a lot in our training lines, because they weren't holding the classes, okay? Then they, you know, migrated to someone, the Zoom-type formats, but. So that's gonna be used to cover those shortages in those areas, okay?
Okay.
That's basically where the, any of the bleeding I have in my budget is in the, in the, the manpower, the, the hour, the wages area.
Yep.
Okay?
I'm good.
Okay.
Your time, Chief. We have some questions from Ben that I'm gonna ask out in the general public. So, nothing to do with you, so.
Okay.
You're, you're, you're good to go. If you wanna hang on for whatever, or you wanna go and schedule a different time?
I'm, I'm good. I'll stick around for the end of the month.
That's good. We might as well get it out there, okay?
I don't think it should be public.
No.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're gonna go into non-public anyway.
Uh, first here, this is from, questions from Ben Bartlett, one of the selectmen, obviously. He was not able to attend us, but he sent us an email, so we'll just go over it quickly with these here. On Fort Hill Road, did gravel get a pull? He wanted this for Sean, but obviously Sean's already gone, so I don't know if you can answer this, Chris. Did gravel be put along the edges of the road to reduce the cracking when the vehicles drive off the edges? Do we do any work on Fort Hill Road?
Yeah, we paved it. The shoulder gravel, I believe shoulder gravel usually waits for the top coat. We have one more coat to go.
We stopped that because of the weather?
But we're, we, we haven't decided that 100% yet, but it's looking like that's gonna wait till spring because of the temperatures. But shoulder gravel usually goes after that top coat, so I will find out and get that answered to Ben.
Sorry, this is not my computer, so I'm just. Can you tell, can you fix this for me, won't you? Did I get emailed that? Sorry. Oh, I got it right here. I got, I can read it from mine. Should've just did that. That mentions that the International Truck that we were talking about earlier, replacing for the new truck with the plow, sander, and wing. You know, he mentions it, it has been a thorn in the side, but he also mentioned about swapping a.
Hold on, I'm low on.
Yeah. You reading that too? Okay.
No, I'm not reading it, but I, but we did do that with that truck. We, in anticipation of that truck's demise, we are rating it for a good stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, second was, or third was on the police department, which we didn't really talk about anything now. That should be something that we put into our budget about upgrading the police with new equipment that they need. Maybe it's for tasers, mace, other stuff like that, as written here, and the necessary training for those to go on there, to actually put that in towards the budget. Then he had a question directly about the MRI, which is our hiring company that we're using to hire our new police chief. And.
He was gonna help you hire.
Yeah, me to, we obviously have the final say.
Sorry. Yes, I mean, that's, sorry, that's what I meant. My apologies. Trying to read off this, somebody else's statements and trying to reword it, so I'm not reading the whole book. And the last question was Sean Kelly from MRI. How well do you know him, Chris? Was he the former lieutenant from Durham Police? Do you know that answer?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I believe that's correct. I, I think he's still the police chief in Weir.
Where, yeah.
Where, New Hampshire.
Right, I knew he was the police chief there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I didn't know what he invested.
He was at Durham previously, I believe, and, and I know he, he works part-time at the UNH Police, so.
Well, because the lieutenant's of the chief, that would be a proper step up to go over there. Anything else for anybody?
I got nothing.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
What letter are we gonna be under, Chris?
A.
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public per RSA 91 dash A colon 32A.
Second.
First, second?
Roll call vote.
Roll a call.
Aye, Donna Dennis.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Aye, Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Moore.
When we come out of non-public, we will be adjourning the meeting, given that there's no other business.
Correct.
What he said.
Got it, right there.
Aye, votes.